Yes. That's the sound.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me. We need to call the Richmond County Council down at the fourth regular session meeting in order.
Yes. Perfect. Called what?
Malinowski.
Here.
Q.
Yes.
McBride. Livingston. Livingston.
Here.
Teresa. Walker. Baron.
Here.
Paul Walker.
Present.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I don't think it's energy. But if I be. Oh.
To the president. I've had some impressions in the progress. Um, and from the work. Especially for the new year, allowing us to stand on our own just got. You have got it. It's just less direct. With some knowledge and revelation. And we carry out the mandate set up as we set before us. Father, we have to continue to want your status with. And they implement the tasks that have been set before them. Father, keep us all safe and strong with your loving arms. These are our blessings we have to thank. Richmond County. And look.
The states of America. I'm going to ask. Thank you. As to item four on the agenda, which is the adoption of the attendance. It's trying to motion for adoption of the agenda.
Yes.
Group five.
Malinowski.
Question.
Q.
Yes.
Livingston. Teresa. Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Paul Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
I, I want to give a connection with chair. As you know, per our council rules, the T S should be elected at the first regular or special call meeting of council in January. As far as soon their act as practical of membership of the council. Uh, especially on their. I'm January. By two minutes. Let's be careful. Mr. Chair, you're breaking up and going in and out over there on your microphone. Sir, Rick, are you putting up when you're talking? Excuse me tonight. Thank you. Group now opens for the election of the chair, um, for the coming year. As I was sure, I'd like to nominate Councilman over Joe Walker.
Thank you.
Obviously, it's nominated as second. And, uh. I propose.
Malinowski. Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa. Walker. Baron.
Yes.
Paul Walker. Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
My kind of hope is that Mr. Walker, let me just briefly say, um, um, my colleagues, thank you so very much for your support, uh, in the past. Um, for my serving, being a servant at the chair the past three years. I mean, they, they have, or they dedicated and hard worked on that period of time. Um, I don't have time to wish the many, many accomplishments that we've made on that period of time. Uh, you know, the work of all committee chairs, I mean, it's a gift, a gift that just can't tell you how much I appreciate and thank you for every single time you take. All to work with. Okay. Okay, over. I'd like to just thank also for their, you know, vote of confidence and support. I am honored and humbled by your decision. That I understand gravity and the importance of the role and I would look forward to working closely. Every member of this distinguished body as we set priorities together for county government and build on our successes, uh, from 2021. Also, I would like to just acknowledge my predecessor, the honorable Paul Livingston. Uh, he has served in this role with dignity and grace for three consecutive years. Uh, he's been a stabilizing force, uh, on this council and I just wanted to thank him for his service, um, to this body, the service to county government as well as to the citizens of Richmond. Next item on the agenda is going to be item six, which is the election of the vice chair. As items today, a vice chair shall be elected either the first regular or special call meeting in January or as soon as thereafter as may be practical. Vice chair shall serve continuously into the following, uh, January unless removed by a two-thirds majority vote. For full council, the vice chair shall reside in the absence of the chair. And at this time, nominations are now in order for the office of vice chair. And so floor is open, um, for nominations. Uh, would you recognize this view? Nominate councilwoman back.
Thank you.
Seconded by Malinowski. All right, are there any further nominations? And that there are none, uh, motion, is there a motion to close the aisle four for nominations? Uh, yes, uh.
I'm serving as your vice chair and, um, to get your second a nomination, Maggie, but, um. And I have two sentences left as vice chair. I want to take the privilege to say that I'm going to support. I go back and be closer.
Question. Paul Walker. At this time, I'm out of court, will you take the vote?
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Paul Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
Now, uh, with the vice chair, Ms. Maggie, we move to the rest of the room. Chair, if you have any remarks you would like to offer, uh, to have the floor at this time.
Thank you. Um. Thank you to colleagues for the support this evening. And, uh, this first year has been a great experience working alongside you to be with both boards to all that we want to accomplish together in 2022. Thank you.
(applause). The next item on the agenda is item seven, which is selection of the seat. There's no objection. I would ask that we move that item to the very end of tonight's agenda. Have a void, plenty of music. On the middle of the council meeting. There is no objection. Why are we moving it? Well, uh, I, I, I will personally, I'd rather not. Up in the middle of a meeting and we all just swap seats or play, play musical chairs. That's, that's to me, but I mean, if we rather, but if there, if you all would rather do that now, um, you know, we'd do that. Matter of preference for me. There are some moves that we move item seven to the end of the agenda. Second. Thank you. I'll move second, any discussion? The discussion, man of the court, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
No.
Q. McBride. Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Um.
Walker. Baron.
Yes.
Paul Walker.
Yes.
Mackey. English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
So I want to get jet, item eight, which is second reading, item, item eight A, uh, this is that electoral districts section of members. Something. Thank you. Item eight A, the ordinance establishing new electoral districts for the election of members of Richmond County councils pursuant to the United States Census of 2020 and in compliance with section four dash ninety dash ninety, uh, of the South Carolina Code of laws, nineteen seventy seven amended. Uh, I would entertain a motion. Second. Okay. It's been moved properly second, any discussion? There is no discussion. Uh, now, Court, will you take the vote, please?
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
Paul Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I don't think my name was called.
Teresa.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item on the agenda is item nine A, that is a report of the administration finance committee. That item has to do with the Richmond County Sheriff's Department School Resource Officer Grant. Uh, and that will be presented by the honorable Bill Malinowski.
Mr. Chair, at the December sixteen, twenty twenty one meeting, uh, the A and F committee.
Recording in progress.
We discussed at length, we had school board members there as well, uh, board members. And, uh, the committee recommended to approve receipt of the grant if it is awarded. Uh, and it was actually pending several questions that many council members had. Um. There's been a lot of communication back and forth. We just were provided tonight a memorandum of agreement that states here. And, I mean, going back to the committee recommendation, if there aren't any other questions, which anyone's free to ask, the committee did recommend to approve the receipt of this grant.
And now.
Is, is the committee approval, Mr. Chair? Recommendation, so you either vote on it or somebody puts another motion.
Well, okay, we have this time out. The recommendation. Okay, uh, well, Ms. Newton, you recognize.
That the memorandum that we're, uh, we're accruing is the one that you emailed out, Mr. Wright, uh, the last one.
Questions are discussed. Claudia, take the vote, please.
Can you please repeat the motion? I couldn't hear who made the motion in second.
It's a motion to, it's a motion to approve, um, the, uh, the rec, accept the recommendation of the, of, of the committee.
And it was motion by?
Uh, this is. It's a recommendation, it's no motion.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa. Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Paul Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English. Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is item ten, falls under other items, item ten A, to review of the. Item, uh. I'm gonna take a motion for reconsideration, some move. Okay. Question. Claudia, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
No.
Q.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Teresa. Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
No.
Paul Walker.
No.
Mackey. English.
No.
Newton.
Chair. I'd like to have a point of privilege, uh, before we move on with this item.
Recognize this.
Uh, I just want to say it once again, thank you to the sheriff's department and school district. Um, I've said it over and over, since we've been talking about this, my younger son, uh, is one of those schools that does not have an SRO present, it's also the school that, a couple of months ago, when there was a hijacking of the bus, in that school, I just wanted to be safe, and I appreciate this, thank you so much.
Also, um, I would like to just, uh, recognize some of our partners here, uh, for Richmond School District Two on this evening, I see, count. Sorry, um, Christine, uh, James Manning, I have him confused with his uncle, Jim Manning, former councilman, my predecessor, also see Dr. Teresa Holmes, who is the, uh, chairwoman for Richmond School District Two, as well as Dr. Baron Davis, superintendent, and Dr. Harry Moly, who's the chief financial officer, uh, for Richmond School District Two. Again, just wanted to recognize, uh, your presence here tonight as our, as our partners, uh, over at the school district, so, uh, thank you for being attentive tonight. Item on the agenda is item, uh, ten A.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to recognize Deputy Chief Public, who is here with instrumental in doing this also.
Absolutely. On the agenda is item ten A, from other items, uh, that's review of the emergency ordinance extending the previous emergency ordinance requiring the wearing of face masks to help alleviate the spread of COVID-19, specifically the recent surge in the Delta variant, as we read. Uh, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Probably second, any discussion? Mr. Malinowski, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would just like to know, how many notices of violation did, uh, county receive for people not wearing masks?
Mr. Man, I don't have that number, uh, but we did get a number of individuals that did call, uh, once the ordinance was extended, communicate that individuals were not wearing masks, and a fire marshal did go out, use those entrances, uh, to those areas, uh, to address those agencies, and we did, when there were folks there that were not compliant, we spoke to them about that, uh, but I can get those numbers for you, I don't have that this night.
Pretty citations issued, if you know what I mean.
I can get that number for you as well.
There were citations issued then?
I believe that we did issue a need to, a citation, so I, I can get that exact number for you, Mr. Malinowski.
You recognize.
I have a question and a comment, and I guess I'll, I'll do it like. A question for, for my colleagues first, so I support masking, I will continue to wear masks, I want others to wear masks, I'm concerned a little about the ordinance that we're renewing, it seems, um, more of a blunt tool, and, and more dated towards, um, some of the old circumnances that it's taking to account, for example, uh, workplaces where everyone. I think it doesn't necessarily. I find in terms of the space, or where people are, I guess I would wonder if there's an openness to some more nuance with it, so for me personally, again, I'm wearing a mask, I'm gonna take, continue to wear a mask, I wish that everyone would wear a mask, um, I would ask, you know, what are we doing to continue promote vaccinations, what are we doing to continue to promote those efforts, but also, you know, is there an openness to doing something like that? I would love to see, uh, you know, continue to mandate masks in our county buildings, but just for some of the other places, I would, would love it if we can, you know, make accommodations, or at least take into consideration those places which are fully vaccinated, um, which this ordinance doesn't.
Heard the discussion. You recognize, Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, well, does that mean that Councilwoman Newton is, is asking that the ordinance be rewritten to take that into consideration, and would you defer this? Question?
I don't know what the, the will of my colleagues, um, would be on that matter, so, I mean, I'm.
Your motion, isn't it?
No, no, I, I don't, that's why I asked for discussion, I don't know if that's something that my colleagues are open to, or if they wanted to, you know, to continue, I, I don't know if it's something that, you know, that would more, if people are open to those applications.
Question, uh, Baron, you recognize?
Just of what Ms. Newton, uh, shared, and, uh, is with a question, of this current mask ordinance. Able to expire on one day.
I know.
I believe the, the answer is January the ninth, when the data is declared to expire.
This is a question. Others that you recognize? Uh, I, I actually will have a problem, um, in the future, looking at some of the concerns, especially on my colleague. Question? Thank you. Thanks, well, also, um. And I'm out, I'll take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q. McBride. Livingston. Teresa. Joe Walker. Baron. Paul Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English. Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All the questions. So, Madam Clark asked you to take the vote, uh, on this item.
Malinowski.
No.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
No.
Joe Walker.
No.
Baron.
Yes.
Paul Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
Item on the agenda is item eleven, about. Motion by, uh, Malinowski. Staff. Part. Have staff amend section twenty-six dash twenty-six, uh, development with space open to design standards, the land development code, by amendment of formula used to determine the total number of units allowed in utilization of density base and density bonus design standards. I deem the. Painted open spec area. And that it will be per to, uh, committees, specifically development and services. Item on the agenda two was item seven, which was moved toward the end, which is the selection of seats. Item reason, January, every election, after the election, rather the seat of the chair, vice chair, council member shall select their seats based on seniority, years of continuous service, and then in alphabetical order. Motion for that, do you? Uh, Mr. Livingston, seniority. Age before duty. Malinowski.
I'm staying here.
McBride. I'm staying in this. Joe Walker. Walker.